Okay, thank you very much. Is the bishop here? Okay. Jumelambakhay to kidumedesee Luna Babaling in this platform. Kape kidumedesee ba'akbo ote babakatwa mvaru ukoletse homule homi. Oo rabafitela intengrale kha'outen provincial legislature. I know that we are live on Facebook and YouTube. So rally dumedesaleluna ote babaling lile intengfano kovalorona. And those who have joined us through other means of social media platforms. And my name is Kitigoni Dialle. I'm the chairperson of the portfolio committee on Kauta and human settlement. This is a public hearing really. We're not going to speak much ourselves as members of the provincial legislature. It's a public hearing on the customer marriages amendment bill. Rekileho refahoto collected inputs at public gabo para. Elin lunaba'akba kha'outing. But for this purpose on the platform today, we have different stakeholders that have joined us in. I am going to now allow members of the committee to introduce themselves. To yourselves as people of kha'outing and the stakeholders that we are hosting today. I'm also going to be acknowledging, I'm not sure if they have joined on MS teams or they have joined us through other means. Eh, dikhosi kahu farlohanachana. Ki ere kisantikeme tuhurba indicator hurubaten. Let me call upon members of the portfolio committee to introduce themselves. And I request that you switch on your cameras so that the people of kha'outing can see you. Eh, member Nube, let's start with you. While waiting for member Nube, member Ledwaba.
Thanks Chairperson, my name is Malisa Ledwaba, member of the portfolio committee of Kauta and human settlement.
Raliborha eh re. Members Nieman.
Good morning to everybody that has joined these public hearings. My name is Greg Schneemann and I'm a member of this portfolio committee. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, Members Nieman. Member Nube.
Good morning, Honorable Chairperson. My name is Honorable Bingim Nobe, a member of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see, is there any other member that I've missed? I'm using my participants to review. Are there any members of the portfolio committee or the legislature who are here and I might have missed?
Chair, Alombe, Malima was struggling to connect. I'm not sure if he has connected already now, but eh, he was around. I'm not sure if he did manage to connect again, Chair.
Okay, member Malima, he is trying to connect. He will find us in progress. Member Dalton, where is he?
Member Dalton as well Chair, he has been struggling to connect, but he will be connecting soon. Because I've been trying to assist him.
Thank you very much. Are there any apologies from the side of the portfolio committee members?
No Chair, as far as I know, I haven't received anything. Colleagues have not reported any apology from members, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Ere kecheka, is the department here? I've seen them here. Who's leading the department? The Department of Kauta, be it national or provincial, are you here?
Chair, when I spoke to Tafita from the HOD's office, he told me that Given Papelle Maluleke will be the one presenting. So I'm not sure if Given has connected already or...
His mic is on, he's not speaking. Sive sentat. Given? Me omnat. Okay, I see. I see on my participants is here. Eh, is... Is the bishop here? Let me see. Yes, I'm in a gama public hearing now, Chair. Apologies about that. Is Kontroliza here? The thing is, I want to acknowledge people, but I have a challenge. Because I see organizations being named, so the challenge is also those of you who have logged in, you have not used your names to log in. But it's fine, as and when you are here, we will acknowledge you properly. But we just want to acknowledge Mahosi kahu farlohanachabona. Eh, King Mukutwani, you are welcomed. Chief Tlangamandla, you are welcomed. Chief Gisha, welcomed. And Datematonzela, Datemlondolozie. Datarambau, Datemasilela. Datematonzela, Remapena. Datempala. Datemadikehela. Lee Chief Maritz. You are all welcome in this stakeholder engagement on customer marriages amendment bill. I also want to acknowledge some of young women who are here to make their input on this. I'm going to request that we observe a moment of silence or get a volunteer that wants to pray for us before we start with our public hearing. Any volunteer to pray? Let us observe a moment of silence. Amen. Thank you very much colleagues. I think earlier I have welcomed all of you. And I also want to emphasize that today is just a stakeholder engagement. This is a public hearing for the amendment bill on customer marriages. And we have called upon people of kha'outing to make sure that they really make inputs on this bill. Because this is one of the most important bills that we have in the country. And that is more about a basic unit of our society, which is families. And we have seen that previously, women who are in polygamous marriages have been to a certain extent discriminated. And there are legal cases in this regard. And our parliament saw it fit that there's a need to amend to suit the interests of all parties that get involved in customer marriages. And especially women who are mostly vulnerable. And in most instances, they are discriminated at. Especially when it comes to issues of property rights and inheritances generally. And this amendment bill is seeking to ensure that that equality is realized. So we are encouraging you as people of kha'outing, wherever you are, you can make submissions through emails or sending us WhatsApps or calling our offices. As well as on Facebook page of the Kha'outen Provincial Legislature. And on YouTube, you can make your comments there. Our team will collect your inputs and compile them for further processing by the National Parliament of South Africa. So yeah, this is the process. We have started on the 7th of September. We are continuing and it will continue until the 30th of September. So we will also be conducting other hearings with other stakeholders tomorrow. But we are saying everybody has the right to make contributions towards this. I am now going to call the Department of Kauta to come upon the stage and introduce the bill. Who is presenting, Datemalulega or Memalulega? We are not sure. Who's here? Where's Given Malulega?
Kimmete.
Okay. Make given Malulega, where are you?
She's struggling with sound, she's systeming her height.
One of the things about technology is you must prepare yourself. So you can look in for a meeting of 11 o'clock at 11. It's same as physical meetings, you must travel to that meeting. So you can't want to drive to a meeting of 11 and leave your place at 11 really. So what do we do Jabu? Who's here from the department? So she can't speak to... She can't speak, she can't do anything. She can't even get us someone to make a presentation.
I'm not sure if Mulik Fani Peggy from Kauta can be able to assist.
The people of Kauta are all here, I can see them. That Peggy is here, Male Fani Peggy is here. Mokhadi Muloto, you are here. Why are you guys quiet? Motan Mapuli. I mean, there's a fault here. What is happening colleagues? We've been calling you to introduce yourselves, you are quiet.
Morning Wal.
Morning, Mokhadi.
Yes, eh, the thing is, Given, she's working within traditional affairs. As here our like Kauta cooperative governance. And we are from community development program, working with the community directly with traditional issues. So Given is the one actually responsible for that. So hence when they said they're quoting Tafita from the HOD's office, then indicated to say Given will be the one presenting. So we are not in a position to give that presentation. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is provincial Kauta. Is Given for provincial Kauta?
Yes, Given is from provincial Kauta. That's what is happening. We think we are from the very same department but different unit.
Muzima. Kauta. Is anyone calling this Given so that we get to understand what is the issue? Good day Chair, Muzima here. Kigopa, Lefunela Batwaluna va Kauta tu. I mean, really, this is so unprofessional. There must be a person on standby. You can't when you do things online and rely only on one person.
Chair, I'm trying to speak to David Tafita from Office of the HOD to call her and check what is her challenge, Chair.
Honorable Members. What is your advice? We've been here for 30 minutes. I mean, we even bought time for them to connect properly. Member Nube.
Honorable Chairperson. This is really unacceptable for the support staff who only realize now that they're not ready. I mean, it's almost after 30 minutes. We're not even supposed to try and start now to check their whereabouts and their connectivity. It's unacceptable. You have mentioned that it's YouTube, it's Facebook and any other mode of IT communication. What are they gonna say about us? What's gonna happen tomorrow? Thank you.
Members Nieman. Chair, you call me. Members Nieman.
Thanks Chairperson. I was going to make a suggestion that perhaps if it was at all possible, that you might want to consider adjourning this session for a few minutes. Because I also noticed that the parliamentary officer is not part of this meeting at the moment. And I would imagine that would be the person that needs to assist as well in trying to find out what is actually happening from the department side. It's just a proposal I'd want to make. You may want to consider adjourning for a few minutes so that we are able to get hold of the Office of the MEC as well to assist with this.
Honorable Chairperson, do we have a permanent delegate here? Sitting in this committee because he can also present because it's part of... Sitting on this, in this committee because he can also eh present because it's part of the responsibility also if departments, departments act as backups on, on these processes. Thank you.
Chair, the, the permanent delegate is also struggling to connect as well. We're trying to assist him to connect, Chair.
Um can we attend for, you know, attend, attendments eh this organizes people? Um can you, can you check where's the HOD of Copta in Houghton? Can he be traced? Can we get the HOD of Copta in Houghton that we as people of Houghton, we are waiting for his department to come and make a presentation here? It can't be when we say the meeting starts at eleven, you, you start checking your systems. I see the Given we've been waiting is now in. Is she able to speak? Given Maluleka, your, your mic is on. Talk to us. The permanent delegate, Kintathemutamai, he's not here. Who has his cell number? Member Lidwaba, can you help us trace Ntathemutamai? Because had he been here as a public rep, we were going to continue. Um this is the appeal, they must present it. And they are not here, including his national department. Please eh locate him for us. Um what is happening with Given? Given, I see your mic is on, but you can't speak. Can you write a message at least because earlier you wrote a message? I guess maybe, I, I don't know. Musima? Memusima Kekana? Musima? Musima? You are also, are you having connectivity problems now eh?
Hello Chair, no, I'm not having connectivity problems. I was just with Jackie on the phone, on the phone now, that's why.
Okay, please save the, please save the situation um as our legal person. Eh Musima, Musima Kekana K legal advisor here on our committee. So she will present some legal aspects of the bill while we are waiting for Copta HOD to sort himself up and, and come and make a presentation. So I'm going to invite Musima from the Houghton Provincial Legislature to just present the legal aspects of eh the legal aspects of, of the bill. And yeah, we'll take it from there. Musima, please come in. I know you are a soldier. You are always ready.
Thank you very much Chair. Can I just pull my memorandum so that we just start from that point? Good morning to everybody, to, to all the honorable members and all the stakeholders in the room. If I can just have two seconds to pull my memo, then we can take it from there.
Okay, no problem. Are you able to switch on your camera just for a while? I know connectivity might be a cha- a challenge.
Yes Chair, I can switch on my camera.
Just for people of Houghton to see when we speak of a legal person in Copta. Portfolio Committee, we speak of who. And continue, Musima.
Chair, just excuse me, I'm just trying to pull my memo.
Okay, um who's accepting people on the lobby? There's several participants that are waiting to be accepted. Jabu?
I am accepting them Chair.
Oka se tene wa fikawa ras. Dimamaiki. Olata, oze ni lata, dimamaiki. Solanga ra, wano kira koko Copta, rebadlele HOD Yalu na iko presenter.
Thank you Chair, I think I'm ready. We can proceed.
Proceed, Musima, thank you.
I'm, I'm going to use the memorandum which we had shared with the PPP eh team so that they can use it at the pre-workshops that were conducted prior to the public hearing. I think this is um in a very reduced and layman's language so that it's very easy for the public to understand without using a lot of legal jargon and so on. So briefly, the Recognition of Customer Remarriages Act came into force in, on the fifteenth of November, the year two thousand. And in terms of section one of the matrimonial property regime of spouses in customary marriages is governed by customary, customary law. So what this basically says is that all the parties that are married in terms of um eh in, in, in terms of customary law are currently governed by the recognition of customary marriages act. And all the assets and all the liabilities within that marriage is governed by section seven one of the same act. And so we see that prior to this bill, in terms of um customary law, marriages particularly eh polygamous marriages were regarded to be marriages out of community of property excluding the accrual system. So the first case that came was um the Gumele versus the President of South Africa in two thousand and one, which was challenging this regime to say that all marriages in customary law are marriages out of community of property. The Constitutional Court ruled in that judgment that all monogamous marriages, customary marriages are in community of property unless spouses agree to a different property regime. This is eh regardless of whether the marriage was entered into before or the commencement of the recognition of customary marriages act. So we see the Gumele eh judgment challenging that every customary marriage should be out of community of property. And the judgment that was made in the Gumele case was to say, those that are in monogamous marriages will be deemed to be in a marriage in community of property unless it is otherwise stated in an accrual system. Now this judgment left out the marriages that were out of, that were polygamous marriages. And then we see a case that came eh in, 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 in the year twenty eighteen, the Ramu Hovee case. So the latter was changed in the Ramu Hovee case. In terms of section seven two of the recognition of customary marriages act was declared to be in constitutionally invalid. Resulting in polygamous marriage, polygamous customary marriages entered into before or after the commencement of the recognition of customary marriages act being in community of property subject to the accrual system. This means that spouses to monogamous customary marriages and polygamous marriages entered before the recognition of customary marriages act and after have equal rights, equal ownership and other rights over the matrimonial, matrimonial property. In practice, many women in customary marriages do not know how difficult it is to enforce the right to property. Spouses that are parties to polygamous marriages entered after the commencement of the recognition of customary marriages act must still apply for court for approval, approval of an agreement which will regulate the future matrimonial property regime. So the Gumele case made a judgment in relation to monogamous marriages. Polygamous marriages were left out. And then we see the Ramu Hovee case challenging that, saying that also women in polygamous marriages should be protected. So this judgment brought in line to say both people that are in monogamous marriages and in polygamous marriages now have equal rights. Irrespective of whether the marriage was entered into before the commencement of the act or after, such marriages will now be deemed to be in community of property unless there is an accrual system that regulates that. So basically, there's three things that um this act seeks to do. The first thing was to change the interpretation of traditional leadership so that it is in line with the Traditional Leadership Act. The second thing that we see is now bringing people that are married in monogamous and polygamous marriage is now giving them the same rights irrespective of whether the marriage was entered into before or after. So basically Chair, I think in a very simplified language, that is how we can explain to the stakeholders that this is the objective or this is what the bill seeks to achieve. Thank you very much Chair, that was in short what, what I had to say. I don't know if people are interested in the legalities and, and, and so on, which I'm more than happy to also go into.
Thank you very much eh. Um has Given sought out himself or herself out? Member Nubie?
Thanks Honorable Chairperson. The speaker that has just presented just now mustn't take for granted that everybody that is listening and have tuned in today have gone through that pre-workshops that we've done. So for you to end up by saying if there's a person that is interested in legal, what, what, what to, 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 to do it. I think just present for the benefit of anyone, whether it's the first time of the person listening to this must be enabled to understand so that that person can then give us his or hers views. Thank you.
Thank you very much eh, Member Nubie Mwinela Matoko Meeting. I think um it, it was an error. Eh welcome Member Adams.
I am here, I'm here. I just wanted to say I managed to sort out the connectivity problems. I'm on my phone but.
Okay, thank you very much Ntathem.
Thank you Ma.
Welcome. I'm also going to be on my, yeah, I'm also going to be on my phone. There's no electricity. I forgot to charge. I've been using my laptop. Welcome Member Malima. I'm trying to see who's here. Wait, the Given is disappeared again. Okay, here's Given. Given, are you ready to make a presentation?
Asantateke Kana is well Chair, okay anymore.
From the department?
Yes Chair.
Where is he? Okay. Where is he? Can he come in? Is he the one who's presenting? Why angry with these people of Copta? Ntathem Kekana, are you here to present?
Yeah, Chairperson. I, I, yes, yes, I was advised or the presenter is having audio challenges. But I've got fast lines as I speak. I'm not sure whether they are not disrupting the meeting. As I hear. I'm saying there are people that are here who are not necessarily part of the meeting that I'm part of.
Oh, okay. You, you can present Ntathem Kekana.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Eh just, 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 just a minute so that I sort out myself.
Okay, Member Malima and Member Adam, Adams, can you please introduce yourself? Eh your apologies earlier were noted that you have connectivity problems. Introduce yourself to people of Houghton, switch on your cameras while Ntathem Kibakekana is preparing himself. We want your face eh Murudi.
I'm coming Chair.
Okay.
I'm trying to get my face. Chairperson, I'll, I'll, I will put my face up shortly but let me introduce myself not to hold the meeting up. My apologies firstly for for coming in late to the meeting to the people of Houghton. I want to apologize. This is not what we normally do. But it was connectivity problems. We apologize profusely. And I trust that the next few days would be very profitable and beneficial to the people of Houghton with regards to the customary, customary, customary marriages bill. And I pray that we'll be able to come conclusive um de- debate and results so that we can, you know, let the people of Houghton know that GPL and GPG is a government that really cares. Thank you so much Chairperson.
Thank you very much eh Muruti Warona, Wa Houghton Legislature. Rama Lima, where are you? Switch off the mic eh, Member Dalton.
Chair, can you see me now Chairperson?
Yeah, we see your beautiful face.
Thank you Chair.
And we can see you are not in Marabastat.
No. Okay Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you Ntathem Adams. Member Malima? Ntathem Kiba, when you are ready, you will just alert me. Who joined late and feel that they must be introduced? I don't want to miss anyone.
I just accepted Ntathemutamai now Chair.
Oh, you have, on my site says you have not yet. She, he's not yet. She, he's not yet inside eh. Genachana Chor Chonatzen eh. Ramutamai?
Okay, Chair.
Ntate Mutzamai, Awarutwa. Yeah, can you please help him? I see he, the system seems to be kicking him out. He is now trying to log in again. Honorable member Mutzamai, can you hear us? Ntate Kikana, I'm, I'm trying to buy time for you to be ready. You are left with sixty seconds. Honorable member of Parliament Mutzamai, have you managed to come in? And can you, can you hear us? Okay, I guess it's connectivity challenges. Um, Mr. Kikana, over to you. Member Nubie, your hand seem up. Is it an old hand or a new hand?
I've done that.
Okay. Eru Ramo Kelleba Khatla Baha Lu Kuleni? Who is here as a representative of Baha Khatla Baha Lu Kuleni? Member Nubie, switch off your mic. We can hear you are eating Simbes. Okay, Baha Khatla Baha Lu Kuleni, they have a representative in the meeting. Eh, and they have a connectivity challenge also. Member Dong, I see you are in, you are welcome. You can greet people of Howting.
Greetings everyone. My name is Member Dong from Howting Legislature.
We want to see your face, we people of Howting. Chair is also very careful eh, Aus.
Yes, Chair, I'm struggling.
Oh, okay. What does the chair is Amutama, you are not okay, but, but Baha Howting, Baha Goon.
Okay, Chair.
Mr. KD Kikana, are you ready? Member Nubie, is that a, a hand?
Yes, Honorable Chairperson.
Come in.
Honorable Chairperson, we seem not to have a, a choice. Eh, can we revert back to the proposal of adjениing? And let all these things that makes us wait eh up till this time to be corrected, then you tell us when to check in back. Otherwise, really, it's, it's not on. Thank you.
Thank you very much eh, let, let, let us share it. Honorable members, there's a proposal. What do we do? I'm a very patient eh.
Chairperson?
Yes.
Member Adams here?
Yes.
Yeah, if, 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 if the delay is not, if the delay is being caused by members of the legislature or parliament and we are forum and we correct and it doesn't affect people need to, must present, then I propose we, we, we wait, but the meeting must go on, Honorable Chairperson.
The delay, the delay is caused by the Department of Copt.
Always.
We've been waiting for them for an hour now, like one hour, sixty minutes.
No, then I want to second the.
We've been patiently waiting for them.
Okay.
It's not that they were not aware of this day.
Yes.
They've been part of the preparations with us.
For a long time, yeah.
For almost six weeks or seven weeks.
Yes.
But just on the last minute, they decide to throw us under the bus as public representatives. And I think it's uncalled for and there's nothing we can do. I have been patient eh. Sixty minutes, a lot of time and a lot of data to constituencies that I hear.
Okay, Chair. Can I, can I second, eh, Honorable Chairperson?
Okay. Member Lidwaba?
Chair, I was under the impression that eh, the chief director, Mr. Kikana, was looking to make a presentation. Unless if I misunderstood what she said. And if that is the case, I don't think we need to adjени. Unless if he's not ready. I thought he was preparing himself to make a presentation. Thanks.
I also thought that eh, he's preparing to make a presentation and I think he was not ready. Is he still in the meeting? Because I'm no longer seeing him on my participants. He's not responding eh, but according to the HOD, there was supposed to be a given Maluleka that presents. Who claims that she has microphone or audio problems? Um, yeah. So I, I, I honestly I no longer see Ntate Kibakekana here. And I think he was sent here just to soften me up because he's my former boss, you know, and this is wrong. I know him to be a punctual man who taught us to be punctual. So what the department is doing is wrong. Members, Member Lidwaba, you are saying?
I was saying, then we, I, I, then I, I second the proposal, then we can adjени, Chair. Thanks.
Okay, Member Dong, you have any different view?
No thanks, Chair.
Okay, Members, Niman?
Now, Chair, I would concur, although journeying is not the best option to go. But I guess in under these circumstances, there might not be any other option.
Okay, thank you very much eh. Who did I leave? Member Malima, I see he's also kicked out. Okay, honorable members and people of Howting, I guess we do not have a choice. We were all patient eh, patiently waiting for the department. I think um the matter on behalf of the portfolio committee should be also raised with the MEC. Eh, it can't be that um we have planned this, we have well advertised this and the department know that it's, it is their role eh to make presentation when NCOP is not here. Eh, and I saw Ntate Mutzamai also came alone. He didn't bring along um his office to come and make a presentation in this setting. And I think eh, we would want to profusely apologize to Batu Baha Howting, Boat Fella, Lilo Nadi stakeholder that eh, we are adjениing this session um to tomorrow at eleven. And we are hoping that eh, Legari Inela Matochomitzin and, and our, our, our apologies, we will on behalf of yourselves raise the matter with both the department and the NCOP. Eh, because Rona, we are just coordinators in a true sense of it. Eh, thank you very much. The meeting is adjени. Um, see you all tomorrow.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Thank you. Can you, so can you please stop the recording? Thank you very much. Bye.
Bye, Chair.
Bye, Chair.